...an election, eighty-eight days prior to that election. Eleanor may know the next date, which is for the November election, or Anita might know that date.
Yeah, that would be August ninth.
For August ninth for the November.
November eighth.
Got it. And so how long does it typically take the Coastal Commission to do their magic?
I'll say at least six months.
Okay.
At least six months, exactly. Longer.
And so with that in mind, then, we would push past the August date for a potential November, which would then push the applicant to next June?
No, March.
Next March.
Or March, March of that year. Got you.
And I'd just like to note, in Article twenty-seven currently, it says that any amendments would have to go to the next, I believe, regular election, which I think is March 2017. So if it went, if this charter amendment went to any other election, then the cost of that election, and I'm sure the city clerk can weigh in about what the cost is, would be something that staff would be asking the applicant to probably pay for. So we'd have to enter into some type of agreement.
Play it a long time, plus make it expensive.
All right. So I'm gonna ask, I don't know if Billy or David, if you guys want to answer this, but I'm just gonna do this because we got this letter here from Delia tonight. So, so...
Don't have a quorum if Steve leaves.
Oh, yes.
All right.
Sorry, we had two people step out. Can't do that. Have a camera meeting when they're gone. Democracy in action.
How you doing?
I was doing fine. I don't know where...
Open mic.
No karaoke from me. Okay, Steve's back. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So Delia mentions in her letter that we have seven existing senior housing and one existing assisted living, which we covered in the staff report over at Silverado. And kind of, you know, raises the question, do we, do we need another one? You know, do we need more facilities like this? And so I think we talked about this when we, when we met, you know, but can you just address for us and for the public, you know, the fact that, as I see it, boomers, you know, there's more and more baby boomers, you know, that are living a lot longer? And, and so, you know, I just, I just want to kind of have an understanding from your guys' perspective about that and the need, if you will.
Then in previous conversations with Delia and hearing her comments on this before, I went back and looked at the website and looked at those properties that she was citing as, as other assisted living. And I believe most of them are financial assistance, and at least six of them, except for Silverado. Then the other assisted that have been mentioned in different meetings that we've joined or been at together were also, they were boarding care, which are six beds or less. And I believe there's only seven of those in town. Those are licenses residential care facilities, but they don't have to have a conditional use permit or anything like that. Just if you have a house, you can have a, and get a license, then you can have six people live there. So some of the ones she's referring to are those. And so I want to make sure that we're talking about assisted living, they're licensed as residential care facilities, and they are more than six beds.
Okay. But to the need, you know, moving forward, you know, the need, is there, is there a need for, you know, this type of assisted living?
Yes. In my presentation, I mentioned that the demand that we would see as, if the demand was met, as we look at the thirty top metro areas across the country, and comparing that demand to what is here and the supply that is here, we'd say that the supply here is only fifty percent of what the demand is for this particular trade area or the market area.
Sure.
And that would be all of the beach communities in the shared service area.
Got you. Okay. Yeah. I would just say, you know, from a personal perspective, I think, Delia, everybody wants to age in place. I watched my grandparents, I still have a, one left after one just passed away a few weeks ago. But, but I, in the past few years, my grandmother, you know, went from living on her own to living with my family. And then, not because they wanted to, but because it just had gotten to a point where they could not care for her any longer with the dementia that she had, had to move into a facility like this. And so it's, it's not a situation I think most people want to go to. You know, I think most people would prefer to live on their own, but, but there, there does come a time when people need help, whether it's the, the individual themselves or the families that are, you know, functioning as their caretakers, and they can't do it to the extent that they need to. So, but I just wanted to bring up your letter, that's all. Okay, thanks.
I have to make one comment regarding Councilman Brand's question. As we met with the Coastal Commission, and I am not an expert on the Coastal Commission, you all have sat in front of them far more than I have, but one of their concerns was that we, if we went to the Coastal Commission first, is that the presentation to them would be incomplete, and then it was, had not been approved by the council and by the city, or by the voters, because that would be part of the process that were required, is, is a reminder.
Proven here, but it didn't, then it would go to the Coastal Commission. It just wouldn't have been approved by the voters.
They deemed the vote as part of the approval process that they would, thought was very important.
Okay. Any, for the public want to say anything? Come on down.
There's, Mayor, you have some written cards?
Oh, right here. You stuck them in on me, Steveo. Okay, gotta put them in front of me. Monica Joyce is the first one. Now, I am going to adhere to the three minutes. Please watch these lights up here. When it gets yellow, you gotta start wrapping it up, okay? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Aspel, members of City Council and staff. I'm Monica Joyce, president of the Redondo Beach Teachers Association. I have been a teacher in the district for twenty-four years, and I'm here tonight to speak in support of the Kensington Senior Living Project. The development of this facility would be a win-win situation for the city of Redondo and the Redondo Beach Unified School District for a number of reasons. The lease agreement would provide an ongoing, ongoing revenue source for the school district. With the expiration of Prop 30 looming, the district needs to look for additional sources of funding. The monies generated by the lease agreement could provide for additional staffing and programs for Redondo Beach Unified School District. The Nob Hill site has been deemed surplus property, and the Kensington facility would be an excellent use of this property. The Fountain Square Group has worked hard to create a facility that is aesthetically pleasing and meets the needs of seniors who are in need of care. It would be a great asset to the community for those of us with elderly parents. It would be very comforting to know that our parents could live out their lives in a lovely facility so close to our homes and our work. Thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Okay, give me a cursive test here. Anita Ravitsky?
Yes, that would be you.
That'd be you, okay, thanks.
I can talk in front of high school, there's no problem at all, but I get very nervous, so bear with.
No.
All right. My name is Anita Ravitsky Stoddard. I am a lifelong resident of the South Bay. And I come here to offer at least two perspectives. I am also a resident known, three Anitas in the house, I have to say, there you go. I've never been in a place with three Anitas in the house at the same time. All right. But I want to offer a couple of different perspectives, and I'm hopefully not going to be redundant here. But the one thing is as resident and former caregiver of my parents. Number one, I had my grandmother, who at age ninety, we did have to put her into a facility, and we were very hard pressed to find someplace. We ended up having to house her over in Harbor City. She was ninety years old, she couldn't live by herself. They were, parents and grandma were in a duplex in Hermosa Beach, grandma in the front house, parents in the back house. My parents couldn't handle that because they had their own set of issues. All right? So that was number one. So we had to move her to Torrance, over there by Harbor General. And that was not the greatest of places, but that's what we could find, because not only do you find a place, but then you get waitlisted. So my mom's dementia started to get very bad. She actually passed away 2013 of Alzheimer's preceded by her soulmate in life, six months earlier, ten months earlier, which was really pretty crazy. So we looked into Silverado waitlist. We looked into Sunrise waitlist. We looked into all of those things. We had to ultimately give somebody to come into the house because there was no place to offer that service for them, which was really very terrible. They all wanted to be together, the Kensington would provide that for my folks, it would be just absolutely lovely. And I'm telling you, you know, having it so close, they lived Hermosa again, I was there every day, it really was quite a burden. I'm also a teacher at the high school, the best high school in the South Bay.
That's right.
Woo! That's...
That's good, that didn't extend your time, don't worry.
There you go. It's all good, it's all good. And I'm vice president RBTA as well. And I will tell you that when, in 2012, and having that vote come in for Prop 30 was really pretty crazy. We took five furlough days. That impacted my salary, not my service hours, but you know what, that actually could have impacted what I would get in retirement, because I'm at that age where, you know, it's the last three years, and then you go down and then up, and they average them. So that would have impacted me forever. So, no, I'm not going. I'm here for a while. Okay. Because I really do need this.
Another minute.
But to have that steady stream of income to the school district would just give the teachers peace of mind, because if we were to have seventeen furlough days, you have no idea how a burden that would have been upon the teachers of Redondo and stuff.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, Delia, come on down.
Don't count, don't mix up urban planning with old people, okay, are two different things. Now I start. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I am here to oppose the Kingston project and make a plea to save the site of the former Patterson School. I am here to remind the elected authorities, staff and residents, that the city needs to re-study its master plan because it's obsolete. A moratorium, not for a particular project, but the study of the land use, like mixed use, and apply to the whole city. No urban plan is developed in pieces. If it was, the puzzle never would be completed. And the result, as I have said in different occasion, will be a totally chaotic urban development, of which Redondo Beach is among one of the best examples of planet chaos. I am here because I am advocating for the highest standard of education for all the children and children, children. I have the opportunity to get the highest levels of education, and that has allowed me to be an universal citizen, to understand the world in its real, diverse, vibrant context. Today, we are a global economy, and the world is flat. I am here to teach the children that no one can get some benefits to detriment the others. Cooperation and goodwill between the parts is the way to reach a common ground, which please both sides and avoid confrontation. This is the way the community succeed, by opening the door to a better understanding among its residents. I am here to request that the Board of Education and the city work together and find the right project which will please both sides and the community. The values of the location, with its very close proximity to the beach, means it's under jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission, which must be part of the decision matrix as well. To conclude, Redondo Beach has a big heart. Redondo Beach has approved already seven senior housing projects and the Silverado assisted living facility. No other beach in South Bay or the peninsula has been so generous. So, I ask you, does Redondo Beach with a population of about sixty-seven thousand do need another more? Please, I ask all of you, do not allow this proposed project move forward and take away one of the most valuable sites left in Redondo Beach. Let's work together and give a good example to our children. Thank you very much.
Todd Lowenstein, please. Come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Todd Lowenstein. I'm a resident of District Two and former school board member for RBUSD. I'm actually here to talk in favor of the Kensington project. I had spent a number of years getting to know both Dan and Billy. They seem very professional and very conducive to working out agreements with the neighbors as well as with the school district. And as the mayor and other folks had talked about earlier, we had tried various different projects to no success. So this seemed to be a very successful project for the school district as well as for the entire city. As already been mentioned, there is obviously a scarcity of memory loss facilities. With an aging population, this will impact nearly everyone in this room. The school district, as Prop 30 sunsets in a couple of years, the school district will be back again, hopefully not turning to the voters and asking for a parcel tax. This is a good way of supplementing, as Anita and Monica had said, the income of the school district and not turning to the voters to necessarily fund a parcel tax. And it revitalizes the property without lots of traffic impact. We all don't agree, obviously, on the rate of development and the size of development in this community, but I think I can be pretty confident in saying nearly everyone in this community supports our schools. And I'd ask you to seriously consider the merits and support this project. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Vish Chatterjee.
Members of City Council, Mayor Aspel, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Vish Chatterjee. I'm a homeowner in Redondo Beach, and I'm a father of three children, two of whom are in Madison Elementary and one on the way to Madison Elementary in a couple of years. In addition to having three children, I also have aging parents, and both my parents suffer from Alzheimer's. My mother in particular is quite advanced in dementia, and for the last five years has been in a memory care facility, and she was in Canada, in Toronto. And it was quite a pain for me to manage that situation, flying back and forth to Toronto probably seven, eight times a year, trying to take care of her while also having the three young kids and running my business here in Redondo Beach. So we made a decision earlier this year, around February, to move her here to Redondo Beach, close by, and it was really tough because there were really, literally no beds available. We went to multiple facilities, we looked at, you know, where there was a bed available, and the best fit we found for her condition of memory impairment was Silverado at Beach Cities, but there was a three-month waiting list. So we got on that waiting list, we were on it for a while, we found a facility in, in the city for a while to move her to in, sort of temporary, and then finally got her to Silverado, where she is now for the last six months. And it's just been fantastic. It's a lot easier for me. I'm out doing errands, I'm out, you know, seeing friends in the neighborhood, and I can just drop by and see my mother. My mother gets a lot more interaction with my children, her grandchildren, so it's been great. The other thing that I, one, one night when I was over there, it was sort of, you know, in the evening and the sun was setting, and there was this elderly man that one of the caregivers rolled out to the balcony to, you know, look over the ocean and see the sun setting. And I asked the caregiver, you know, what his story was, and she told me that he grew up in Redondo Beach and as a child watched the sunset over the beach all the time. And now in his aging years, sort of, that's the one requirement or one ask or request he has. So they wheel him out to the ocean, and he watches the sunset. I thought to myself, what a great sort of thing to have in our community, that, you know, for me, as a younger person in the community, I can take care of my mother locally. For an aging person who grew up in Redondo Beach, for them to have the access to their childhood memories right here in Redondo Beach. And then with this initiative, this initiative, along with the aging population, help, also being able to help our young kids in the school and provide more facility, more teaching facility for them would be great. So I hope this goes through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa Watts. Is it Waltz or Watts? I can't hear.
Good evening. I spoke once before at the commission meeting, and that time I wasn't prepared to speak. And this time, I prepared what I wanted to say. So my name is Lisa Watts, and it, I don't know if you remember, but I said, you know, that I'm a longtime resident of Redondo Beach, I've lived here my entire life. I'm also a counselor for the school district. I'm also on RBTA executive board. My husband is also employed by the school district, and my mother-in-law retired from the school district. My three sons are also students in the school district. So my ties to Redondo Beach run deep. We currently own a home in Redondo that my husband's grandmother owned prior to us. And we live on the same street that his mother lives on, which is the house that he grew up in. So I truly love this community, and I can't imagine living or working anywhere else. During the last planning meeting, I spoke about my husband's grandma and how I wished that the Kensington had existed back then. She passed away on December 31st of 2013, and unfortunately, my two younger sons never really got to know her very well because she had to be moved to a assisted living facility all the way in Washington. There was no space close by here. And she had other families in Washington, family members in Washington, so they moved her out there. Prior to that, prior to them moving her, we used to visit her regularly, and every single Sunday. And my kids knew her as Gigi, and they loved her, and, you know, it's unfortunate that they didn't get to know her any better. And I know she's no longer with us on earth, but I know her spirit is still here in Redondo Beach, because this is where she grew up. Today, though, I want to focus on the present and the future. My dad, who is currently seventy-five, he's also been experiencing some health issues. He's had some TIA's, he had prostate cancer. He thankfully came through those things, but a few months ago, he had to have emergency gallbladder surgery. And although he survived the surgery and, you know, did well with his physical recovery, he's been suffering some memory issues and having some signs of dementia. He and my stepmom, who, they're from the South Bay as well, and she's also from here, they're gonna be moving in with her father, who's eighty-five. So that's their plan right now, is that she's going to be taking care of her dad and my, and my dad. And I know that for now, you know, that's okay, but I know that that arrangement isn't gonna last forever. So my husband and I were just talking about this a couple of weeks ago, because our home is too small to accommodate any more than our family. So, you know, that was when a Powerball fever was going on, so we went and bought a couple tickets. We didn't win. So I'm really hoping and praying that this Kensington project goes through and gets approved, and, you know, God willing, maybe even gets built before my dad will need this kind of care. I just think that having these local options for my, my parents and my husband's mom, you know, it's really important to me. I know that continuing to spend time with them...
Did I really wrap it up?
Okay. Continuing to spend time with them is, you know, good for them and for my children. And my final thing is, RBUSD educates our children from preschool to twelfth grade. If the Kensington project comes to fruition, RBUSD will indirectly be helping families in their final years of life. Through the income generated by leasing the property, the Kensington would be providing the necessary funds to help continue to provide the best educational experience for every RBUSD student. And I, for one, would love to see this come full circle. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's the last of our written requests, so anybody else, come on down. You got a long time before you're moving into that place, so... Pacing ahead, are you? Okay.
No, she don't got that long, though.
Okay.
All right. Hello, my name is Dylan Stein Watts. I am a junior graduating early from the best high school in the South Bay, Redondo Union High School. I'm here to advocate for the proposal of the Kensington project. I've been a student of the Redondo School District since preschool and have lived in Redondo Beach since I was born. My parents both work for the school district, and I have seen the negative effect of furlough days on staff and RBUSD. I feel that money in RB, the RBUSD will receive from the project will help teachers and staff of RBUSD and allow students to get a full year of learning and not have to rush through because of the last days. I also had a great-grandmother who was known as Gigi, who I had never got to say goodbye to because we had to move her to Washington since we could not find affordable assets living facility for her to live out her last years. I wish the facility would have been built so I could have been able to say goodbye to my Gigi. Thank you.
You graduated early, right?
Yes, sir.
Did you go straight to the college or something?
El Camino.
That's right. You're early.
Yes, sir. I am, I'm a head on credits.
That's a... Did your mom help fix the grades or something, or?
No, I got Cs, but, you know.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow, that's good. Thank you. Anybody else?
That's a tough act to follow. I'm Marna Smelzer. I'm here representing the Redondo Beach Chamber of Commerce, and we do support this project. We sent a detailed letter to the Planning Commission several months ago. I'm not gonna go into all the details about that. Everybody has, this evening, has really kind of outlined a lot of the reasons that we're supporting it. But the two factors that it comes down to is it provides some financial, ongoing financial stability to the school district, and it addresses a critical need in our community that we desperately need. So the Chamber of Commerce hopes that you agree with us, and we urge you to move to the next step. Thank you for listening.
And, come on down. You don't need to do that. I know, we should...
Good evening, everyone. I'm, I don't want to be cold-hearted about this project, but I am not for it. And if it was a smaller project, maybe a single-story setback farther from the street, I would, might be more for it, but I, I just would rather that it be built on another, in another location, and not at that intersection or on PCH. We really need to change the zoning ordinances on mixed use on the PCH quarter. It's just getting too overbuilt. And this is a lovely intersection. There's that school there, I wouldn't mind it being kept as a school or a lovely park. There's, you can see the ocean from there and the sky and the sun, and there's all that space and trees. It's, it's a lovely place. And this project is so big, it's, it's almost like Legato. And if these, the buildings are tall, they're gonna block the view, and there will be visitors and employees there twenty-four-seven, and residents coming and going, too. And I just, if this project were located somewhere else, I would be for it. Because I don't, I mean, I'm for, you know, helping senior citizens, because I am a senior citizen. And, you know, I know the future, what the future for me could be, but I'm just, feel that it's too big. And I would, I'm just, would rather that it not be approved. Thank you.
Okay, come on down. Anybody else? Hello?
Hi, my name is Raymer Sweeney, and I am a Redondo Beach homeowner and parent of two children in the Redondo Beach school system. I am here to speak in favor of this project. I, for one, am thrilled to see that the school board has taken the initiative. I believe this process began before my children were born, and I really hope that this will be done before I am in assisted living. I truly believe that it is important that we find alternative funding sources. We cannot rely on the state to meet all of our needs, and I feel like that a lot of research has done, been done into this project and a lot of compromise. And I, for one, will think it's fabulous to have the school district supporting assisted living in our community. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Raymer. Okay. Come on down.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, my name is Eugene Solomon. I'm here in District Two. And I've worked with a number of senior living providers across the United States over the last several years, and I can tell you that there are a lot of ancillary economic benefits to senior living providers in this, in the city. They bring a variety of jobs to the city, from janitorial to food and beverage, all the way to skilled people, skilled nursing, and other people who might be coming into the provider to work with them. When somebody migrates from their home into a senior living provider, they're selling their house. And it's for a lot more than what they sold it for, bought it for to begin with. You have an increased tax base and some other... You have an increased tax base and some other ancillary benefits coming from there. There are concerns about increased incident rates with public safety. Maybe Mr. Shields or somebody else from the community can help you with incident reports or other data from their other providers around the country or around the city or state that can give you an idea of what experience rate they're having with incidents of public safety visiting each location. There's something coming called a gray tsunami. Tens of thousands of people are turning 65 every year. And the occupancy rates, if I'm not mistaken, are in excess of 90% on a regular basis in providers of this kind, especially a provider where you migrate from assisted care to memory care and then maybe beyond. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor Aspel, council members, I'm Mike Christensen. I'm president of the Board of Education, RBUSD. And I think I'd be remiss by not giving a big thank you to you and your staff. You know, we've all been working on this for a very long time, both our board and our predecessor board, as Todd had mentioned, and Councilman Brand, you know, the 7-Eleven group that you were with. This has gone on for a long, long time. It's a lot of effort. And we very much appreciate particularly your staff in coming forward with a real push over the past few months to get this to a point where you can deliberate. And the council members to giving up some of your time to engage with us and with the district, district staff with some very thoughtful questions and concerns and giving us an opportunity to address those. So, I wanted to give you a big thank you for what we think is a very important project, not only for the school district, but also complimentary to the community. So, thanks for your effort and we certainly hope you'll carry this across the goal line.
Thank you. Okay. Come on down. You guys should stand here. You don't have to wait and rush down.
Oh, no, you can come first. No, no, please.
I wouldn't mess with her. Don't mess with Anita.
Again, my name is Sarah Burns and I have an opinion, a concern, and a question about this. As a former public school teacher, I'm thrilled that this provides job security and an end to furlough days for public school teachers, especially on an underutilized lot like that. So, this seems like a real win-win-win situation. My concern that I haven't heard addressed is for the safety of the residents. That's a very busy street and a very busy intersection. And I can't tell by the site plan or the picture if there's a fence around it. I guess there is a fence and a secure access.
They don't get out often either.
Well, in 30 years, I'm probably going to be living there. I want to know how they're going to keep me in from wandering across the street to get ice cream. So, that's my concern. And my, my question may be so tangential that it's completely outside the scope of this project. And as I mentioned before, one of my interests is veterans. And so, I'd like to know if, if we have in Redondo Beach currently any veterans housing or if there are any programs that would provide perhaps veterans housing in this particular project. And if that is outside the scope of this conversation, you can just tell me and I'll take it up at an appropriate time. Thank you.
I have someone that can contact you. You'll give your email or number to the clerk.
I have it.
You have it? Okay. Okay.
I'm not answering that question.
You know what I hope.
Billy. I just wanted to say that, oh, Anita Avr, Redondo Beach School Board. Most of you know me. I've been around for a while, coming and talking to you about lots of things. But this project is very important to me. This was one of the very first things that Laura and I did when we got on the school board, was, was to put this property up. This will never be a school again. This, this building has asbestos and it, it's small and we'd never be able to put a school on that property again. So, you have to find something that we can do with that property and bring money into our school district. And this went out on bid again when we got on. And Kensington put a really nice project out and a really nice bid for the school district. And I think that we've gone through this for, this is now five years, that, just this project. And Mike Webb and I sat across the table many times to do this when Mike Gin was mayor and he sat on that. And we worked really, really hard. And Erin, you've done an amazing job with Anita and bringing this through. And I really think that now's the time for you guys to take that vote and vote for this and vote for it to go to the voters now and not make us wait another six, eight months. Because if we do this, I will be off school board and so will some of you who will be off council, and we'll be going through this all again, starting it over. And I may get to be old enough to be there by the time it's built. So, please, don't make that happen to me and please vote for this now.
Thank you. I agree. Okay, come on down.
Good evening, Mr. Aspel, City Council members. My name is Marzighi Guillermo, resident of District One. I'm here to say that after the Planning Commission meeting, I sent an email to the city clerk asking that I wanted to appeal this project. I received via email indicating to me that there was no project to be appealed. So, when I was going through the agenda and I saw this, I sent him another email, so could you please explain to me what happened? And they said, well, look at the agenda. So, something is going on here either that even before we approve any projects, perhaps city council and, and the city staff need to get together and straighten out some certain, you know, miscommunications that tends to happen on a regular basis. Okay? Because I wanted to appeal this project and you guys are already ready to approve this.
This is the same as an appeal?
Well, but it's not, it didn't go through the process.
This is the process.
No. I was supposed to appeal, I was supposed to fill a form, go to my, my city council member and pay a fee. Okay? So, for the record, let's say that. Next, I'm opposed to this project because it's at the expense of the residents of Redondo Beach. That property is prime commercial real estate. And there is a fallacy going around this place because the monthly cost for, to rent one of those apartments is going to be like $10,000 to $12,000 a month. Okay? It's not going to be like $1,000. It's going to be $10,000 to $12,000 a month. So, for the record, so everybody knows about that. Also, I want to make sure that before we approve this project, we need to know if all the residents, senior residents who live in all these properties that we have are actually, have lived in Redondo Beach or not, or are people from other, other parts of town. If this project is going to approve by you guys, then I would appreciate that we make a disclaimer that says only residents of Redondo Beach or their relatives can live in that property, but nobody else. Because Manhattan Beach doesn't have as many seniors homes. Neither is Hermosa. If it's going to be at my expense or my property taxes, I want to make sure that a resident of Redondo Beach lives in that housing. Then please do not approve a change to Article 27. Why do we need to make exceptions for, for, for the developers? We have to give the good example to the children so they can use their critical thinking and their abilities to make negotiations. This is not the best deal. They can put it any way they want to, but it's not a best deal. If you give this assignment to high schools from Redondo Beach.
Thank you. Your time's up.
You know, they can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your time is up. So, for the record, you want us to only discriminate against anybody that's not from here?
Yeah.
That's your, that's on the record?
For the record.
Thank you.
At my taxes, I want them to live for Redondo Beach.
And we will discriminate. Do you want to discriminate against anybody not from Redondo?
For Redondo Beach.
Thank you very much.
Whether you call it discriminate that, that's your call, Mr. Aspel.
No, I didn't, you just said you agree with that. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify it. Jesus. Love this job sometimes. Yes.
Jim Light, Redondo Beach. I just wanted to clarify for the record, if we didn't have DD, this project wouldn't be in, before us. We'd have condos. And also, I didn't appreciate the fact that we're putting a charter amendment in the blue folder and we couldn't review it ahead of time to see whether we had problems with it or not. We saw it on the, on, on the agenda, but the actual wording wasn't in the, I couldn't find in the actual online stuff. So, if, for something as important as, important as a charter amendment, it should be on the web. Are you saying it was? It was? Okay, so I just missed it buried somewhere? Okay. It's in the blue folder now.
It's been available online since December 18th.
It's in the blue folder now, so something changed.
No.
Anyway, beyond that, I'm torn on this one. I wish it would produce more city revenues. It does represent a loss of parkland in our, our parks and rec element. It does call this out as actual parkland. And we're going negative on parkland since we established our city standard. And our city standard's already 66% less than other cities that surround us. So, we're going the wrong way on parkland and then certainly the Center Cal project exacerbates that. Also, I didn't like, and I told Billy this, we didn't like, I didn't like the entrances on the, through the neighborhood. I wished it would have been off PCH and I didn't like the bulk en masse-ing. But on the positive side, this is real positive revenues for the school and I support educating the next generation of engineers out there to work on the space programs that I've had the opportunity to do. And you're not going to find a, a, a more, a, a project that generates less traffic than this one. So, from a traffic perspective, you can't get much better than this. I also think that this was a model of the developer working with the community because I do like your solution of the one-way traffic through there and routing the traffic so it doesn't go through the neighborhood. So, I think this was a model of how the developer can and should work with the community. So, I'll probably alienate some of our, my supporters out there, but I actually support this project. I think it's a good one. It's a reasonable compromise. I, I, I wish we had something better, but it's been a long time and I think this is a reasonable compromise. And I compliment you on the way you worked with the community. I am actually the way this, as long as the charter amendment is limited to this project, I'm okay with the charter amendment. If it gets expanded to a more generic change, then you may turn something that's probably an easy yes vote into something we'd have to throw a lot of opposition into. So, I appreciate that it was limited to this, this project. And with that, I thank you and, and again, I, I support the, the project.
Anybody else? Okay. Steve, you have a light on.
I was just going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Second. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the general plan amendment and the local coastal program amendment, including the coastal land use plan and the coastal zoning and conditionally approve the project's entitlements subject to the 10 findings and the 39 conditions in the staff report, replacing condition number 15 as follows, that all semi-truck delivery trucks and trash collection shall be restricted between the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Second.
And there's also a resolution to certify the final environmental, environmental impact report.
Number six.
And the ordinance. And the ordinance.
You can go on your staff report. Or you're going to...
Where am I looking for that? So, that, that would, I can read it for...
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
As the staff recommends, is what you want.
Correct. So, there's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redondo Beach, California, certifying, certifying final environmental impact report. SCH number 2013121065, adopting findings and adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Kensington assisted living facility on property located within public community facility zone at 320 Nob Hill Avenue and finding the amendments to the local coastal program are exempt under SEQA pursuant to the SEQA guidelines, section 15265. And then the city clerk can read the first reading of the ordinance.
With the vote on. Jeff, you have your light on?
Yeah. I, I meant to put it on early. I just, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the outreach that Fountain Square did out there with regards to this project, coming to the meeting. The outreach, I think, was outstanding and working with city staff the way they did. And so, I just wanted to say that before we actually voted on it. But yes, I'm total support of it.
Okay. All's a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Not opposed? It passes unanimously. Congratulations.
And I'm sorry.
Let's skip the comments. I know you've got to read.
Can, can I motion to continue the hearing to February 16th?
So, move.
Thank you.
Does it have to be this week?
Thank you.
Instead of closing it?
Well, we need to, we need to open it back up and then, and then continue.
Motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to continue the public hearing.
Thank you.
Whatever day she said.
February 16th.
February 16th.
There you go.
Sorry. We fixed it.
Thank you.
We're good. You got it.
Ready for the resolutions? Okay, great. Adopt by title only resolution number CC-1601-006, the resolution of City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, certifying final environmental impact report, SCH number 2013121065, adopting findings and adopting mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program for the Kensington assisted living facility on property located within the public community facility, P-CF, zone at 320 Nob Hill Avenue and finding the amendments to the local coastal program, program are exempt under SEQA pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section 15265. Adopt by title only resolution number CC-1601-007, a resolution, City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, reaffirming Planning Commission's conditional approval of a conditional use permit, planning condition, design review, coastal development permit, and vesting tentative parcel map number 72314 for the Kensington assisted living facility on property located within the public community facility, P-CF, zone at 320 Nob Hill Avenue, case number Adopt by title only resolution number CC-1601-008, a resident of City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, conditionally approving amendments to the city's general plan, land use element related to residential care facilities for the elderly. Adopt by title only resolution number CC-1601-009, a resident of City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, conditionally approving amendments to the city's coastal land use plan related to residential care facilities for the elderly. Introduction by title only ordinance number 3148-16, an ordinance of the City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, amending the city coastal zoning contained in Title 10, Chapter 5 of the city's municipal code related to residential care facilities for the elderly for introduction and first reading. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We can get Laura back. Thanks, Anita.
You're welcome.
Very nice. And congratulations. Now, you have the outreach, the election, the fund starts. Okay. Okay, we're going to move on. It's not a public hearing, but this is kind of a cool thing and we can get through it very nicely, I believe. Do we have a chance to leave? Okay, who's going to present this on the Serious Crime Reduction Fund and our police dogs and, we're going to be a leader in the, in the, in Southern California pretty soon with this.
Mike Webb will, and Keith Kaufman will make the presentation.
Okay.
And also Melanie Chavera, our city prosecutor. So, just briefly, we've got about an eight and a half minute video to show you, but just to go briefly, since most of you were not here when we created or utilized the Serious Crime Reduction Fund. That started in January 1997. It was back when I was the city prosecutor and had no gray hair. And we created, we had a problem with property crimes, vehicle theft in particular, and the police department came up with an innovative undercover sting operation. So, we could recover the stolen vehicles and recover the property and return it to the victims. But we didn't want to give tax dollars to criminals. And so, we came up with a fund where we had alternative plea bargaining to non-violent, non-theft-related misdemeanors, created money so that the police could use non-taxpayer funds to recover it and worked spectacularly well. The police department did a fabulous job. It's been recognized as the most successful undercover sting in California history, won the League of Cities Helen Putnam Award for Excellence, the only grand prize that the the only grand prize that the city had or until this day has received through the League of California Cities. Created, recovered property on about 4.3 cents per the dollar and recovered millions of dollars of property to give back to the victims. Supposed to be a one-time thing, but it was so successful, we've used it intermittently when the need has arose to address homeland security issues, gang prosecution, prosecuting sex offenders, and identity theft. Recently, or last year, as part of the assessment, I was approached by retired Captain Skipper and Sergeant Keenan, and one of their recommendations, they told me, was to reinstitute this. So, we have. We met last, was it August or September, with then-acting Chief Newt to bring it about. Came up with a number of possible projects, and then met earlier this month with Chief Kaufman and some of his command staff members. We have the recommendations in front of you. And essentially, right now, we have two patrol dogs, but they're only, they're trained to detect narcotics. There's one additional already-approved patrol dog that Chief Kaufman has decided, given the threats facing us in these different times, to train as a patrol bomb-detection dog. What's before you is to get an additional patrol slash bomb-detection dog, to get a newer type of dog called a vapor-wake dog. And we'll show you that video, because it does plug gaps, such as it occurred at the Boston Marathon. Also identified the need for additional ballistic protective vests in the event that we have a active shooter situation. So, I want to show you the basis for the vapor-wake dog, and then I'll turn it over to Chief Kaufman to talk about how we'll go if you approve this. And again, the vast majority of this is not taxpayer funds. It's from people convicted of misdemeanors by Ms. Chivara and her staff. We'll go from having no bomb-detection capability to a truly capable bomb-detection team. And with that...
You know, we've all seen it at the airport, at the train station. You see the bomb-sniffing dog checking the suitcases and the bags on the ground. But what if the explosives are strapped to a suicide bomber or hidden in a backpack? Bomb-detection dogs aren't capable of tracking a moving target, until now. We've got a firsthand look at vapor-wake dogs, the latest technology. No batteries required.
The foundational research for vapor-wake technology began at Auburn University's Canine Performance Sciences Program in 2002. The problem of how to address hand-carried or body-worn explosives was evident. Traditional bomb dogs are trained to search static objects as productive areas for explosive finds. But a moving productive area would require a new canine technology. And now, it was up to Auburn University to develop the solution.
We chose a dog that was very high-drive, very independent, very strong, and developed a dog that could find and identify the person carrying explosives. We saw how valuable it was. I think our client saw how valuable it was. So, we dedicated ourselves toward developing the vapor-wake dog.
Prior to 9/11, traditional bomb-detection canines were rare, even at high-profile events. Today, canine security is more prevalent. But there's still a significant capability gap, the inability to detect moving explosive odor hidden on a person.
That was the basis for vapor-wake, was the idea that a dog can do more than we had been asking it to do before. So, we started developing a technology that addressed that. We started taking the very best dogs that we knew could do this or we felt like they could do that, and started training them in those scenarios to where they could follow the odor to a source.
Auburn University's Canine Performance Sciences Team had a major breakthrough after reviewing Gary Settle's research on the human thermal plume. Humans naturally produce more heat than you might imagine. A person's thermal plume would naturally rise upwards when standing still. But as a person begins to move forward, their thermal plume extends behind them, much like the wake behind a boat in the water.
If I were carrying something on my back that was explosive, the odor of that explosive would become mixed with that thermal plume and would follow the same pattern that the thermal plume would. That's what the dog picks up on. Our breeding program had its start in the early 2000s with some Labradors that came from the Australian Customs Service. We wanted dogs to be vigorous. We wanted dogs to be hard workers and to be able to do it over a longer period of time than they had been trained to do in Australia. So, we brought in genetics from American field-trial Labrador retrievers that had more of that type of work ethic, if you will. We crossed those two, and that was the foundation for us moving our small breeding program forward. An animal's ability is only a slight predictor of what that dog's offspring will be. So, you need a fair number of matings and litters and puppies to be able to make that kind of selection.
After careful environmental and social raising, vapor-wake canines are trained by certified instructors in accordance with the AMK9's patented training process. Next, the fully-trained vapor-wake dogs are paired with pre-selected handlers at our 320-acre Training Academy. Upon successful course completion, teams are certified and licensed for one year. Vapor-wake canine teams have already been deployed at many high-profile government agencies, as well as several high pedestrian venues, including the St. Louis Cardinals, Dallas Cowboys, the Macy's Day Parade, and of course, Auburn University football games.
A standard-detection dog requires a visual cue of a piece of luggage or a vehicle to begin searching, where your vapor-wake dog doesn't require a visual target. As soon as they go into an area, they're already searching and looking for the odor.
It's a non-intrusive search, where the dog actually doesn't have to search the person. It searches the vapor-wake that they leave behind as they pass through an area.
They don't require a cue or a word from the handler to begin their search. We not only teach them to detect the odor on people and moving objects, but we use an intricate cable system, so the dog learns not to use their eyes and depend on a visual target and to always be obedient to the odor.
Vapor-wake canine-detection teams integrate directly into established security programs. Working seamlessly in large crowds, vapor-wake teams can provide an added level of security against explosive material being carried in during the rush of people entering an event. If a dog alerts, the target will be turned over to local law enforcement in accordance with a venue's established security procedures.
Over the time period of when the gates actually start opening, you will have thousands of people that will funnel through different locations of the stadium. Having these vapor-wake dogs out there allows us to cover a lot more ground than we've ever had in the past. The dogs cut that time in half. They work very hard, they're very quick, and the academy that put these dogs out are doing a very good job to make their time more efficient for us. Once the gates are majorly open and we have the bulk of the crowd that goes into the stadium, we will bring the vapor-wake dogs inside the stadium on the inner concourse and run them that way. So, that way, we have a double protection of working the dogs to their best ability and to be more proficient in what we're doing.
Even if I didn't have Zady with me, just the fact of having the officer's presence makes everyone feel secure. But to know her actual purpose, that she's here to ensure that there's nothing in here that can harm them, we get kudos on a daily basis. So, it's very important for us to have canines, vapor-dogs, conventional or martyr. People will come up and ask what she does, and it gives us that more human effect, because we're able to not just be the police and a patron. It's more so just a conversation that we're having between each other, and the dog is included. Her job is vital, because it's another tool to allow us to connect with the community. Overall, what she does is not only give a sense of safety, she also shows them that it's okay to be in the station, because we're here.
It's clear that a vapor-wake canine-detection team can work side-by-side with your existing explosive-detection teams. We offer government agencies, law enforcement agencies, or already-established security programs the ability to put their own staff through our vapor-wake canine-detection course and supply them a fully-trained vapor-wake canine. We also offer vapor-wake on a per-event basis to augment existing security and mitigate against body-worn explosive devices. There currently is a domestic terrorism threat, and it is for body-worn explosive devices. If you do not have vapor-wake canines, then you currently have a security gap within your organization.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Kaufman to talk about where we will be if you approve this at the end of it. It's a fairly lengthy staff recommendation, so I would, we would hope for a motion to approve the staff recommendation. And again, the only tax funds used will be for the purchase and outfitting of the car. I've spoken with Mr. Wazansky. There's money in the vehicle replacement fund. But the purchase of all the ballistic vests and the additional two dogs, including the vapor dog, and all the additional training, plus the bonus pay for the bomb-dog trainers through the end of this fiscal year will be paid out of funds from the Serious Crime Reduction Fund.
Would we be able to get the Serious Crime Reduction Funds for next year also?
If we have them? That's always a question. But yes, but certainly, our recommendation, and we have another of other exciting projects that we think will help make our community safer. But certainly, our intent is to, at a minimum, cover the cost of recertification or retraining and other costs that come up. This certainly, I think, is a high priority, and Chief Kaufman can address that better than I can.
All right, Chief, bring it on.
Thanks.
Well, thank you. Special thanks to Mike Webb and the city attorney's office for all their work and collaboration, research on this project. You know, in the, with all the discussions that we've had about threat assessments, and actually, in my short time here in Redondo, we've had three...
A lot, yeah.
Three threats in at least three months. I'm not one to stand idly by, and this is really a proactive approach to addressing some of the issues that, at times, can hold our community here hostage. Rather than just set out to have one bomb-detection dog or even two, with the approval of this approach, we're looking to develop really a team, a team of three dogs that can help not only address issues that we have here in the community, but will almost be self-sustaining in our ability to meet out certain threats and to be able to live our lives without being held hostage by a phone call. And with the amount of events that we have in this city and the changes that are going on and possible developments that are coming about, looking at establishing these teams now and getting them trained now so that we're not being reactive later is a big part of what I think we need to do as a police department and as a city. This is something that won't occur overnight with your approval. It's going to take some time to get these dogs, get them trained, and select the handlers and that type of thing. But it's something that's high on our priority lists, and I think it will not only help, not only help our community, but it will also help our police department learn that with programs like this and the quick development of this type of team, that we'll be able to assist not only our own communities, but our communities surrounding us, because the regional approach to these types of threats, especially in today's age, is the way to handle it. You can't just only focus on what you're doing here. You have to collaborate with everybody and learn what the threats are and make sure that we're all on the same page. So, I would appreciate your support on this, and I think it's going to be something that will be extremely beneficial to the city, the citizens, especially the school district, where a lot of these threats have been directed as of late.
Great. The, this is beautiful. Thank you. You know, I've known the dogs for my entire time I've lived in Redondo Beach, and I've had a couple of the canines, you know, that were the siblings of our canine officers' dogs. The question, you know, you have the only bomb dog in the South Bay, and if it's, that dog's called out, you're obviously going to go out to other schools and whatever eventually. Would you set up some kind of joint authority or something so we can actually charge these other people? So, we're not, we don't want to do anything globally. But, you know, this is a vast expense. We do have to watch out for the taxpayers of Redondo.
Yeah, that actually almost works itself out within all the agencies, especially in the South Bay. We already have a mutual aid agreement amongst all the cities. And just like when we use dogs from other agencies, LAX, LAPD, City of Hawthorne, they'll bring them here to assist us with our events. And we would do the same for them on a no-cost basis. Now, this is obviously something that...
You're the only bomb dog around.
Could be a little above and beyond this special vapor-wake technology. But, you know, it would only be used within reason outside of the borders of the city.
Oh, cool. Thank you. I think it's great. Thanks for doing all this. Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I think it's pretty amazing what a dog can do. I mean, us humans walk by a bomb, and something might look suspicious or whatever, but a dog can, from a distance, tell whether or not there's a danger in the room. And it's absolutely amazing that we are at a position that we can have this. It's not really technology. It's just a dog that's been very, very well-trained. And I think it's, it'll be a great benefit for us, especially with the threats that we've had recently. You'll be able to go into a situation like that in a very short period of time to determine whether or not it's a real or a fake threat. And I think that's great. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
I give you about a month before somebody complains about a genetically-engineered dog. Somebody will, if you have Facebook, you know, boycott Monsanto. Okay. Anybody in the public want to say anything?
Marcy Yerma from District 1. Mr. Mayor, City Council, I just want to say that this is a great project. But on the same lines, I would like to request that he give us a presentation as how the department is doing in terms of personnel, how these threats that we, the city has been hostage, how that's going to impact the budget.
They what?
How that's going to impact the budget. Are we doing a lot of overtime? Like he said, we have a lot of new developments on the pipeline, correct? So, how are we planning for that? That's all. But this is a great project that complements that.
The protection of our citizens is the paramount, of paramount importance, so it doesn't matter how it impacts our budget. This is paid for out of the Serious Crime Reduction Fund right now, though.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, there's a motion and a second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? God help you. Okay, good. Now, when somebody make a motion, we take a break for 10 minutes?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I need to read the...
I know you gotta read it, but we're still on a motion.
Well, before that, items N2 through N4, because they deal with the waterfront and possible interaction with CenterCal. I spoke to the city attorney, and I think it's best exercising caution. I'm going to recuse myself from 2 through 4.
And just to be clear, he's recused on 4. Depending on how closely N2 and N3 interact with N4, there's the potential for the conflict. There's no decision to be made on that tonight. So, in an abundance of caution, he may in the future be able to participate on N2 and N3.
Don't go home, you might be here on N4, sit in the back and wait. You have to read something, don't you?
Yes, thank you. Adopt by 4, this phone, title-only resolution number CC-1601-014, resolution, City Council, City of Redondo Beach, California, authorizing a fiscal year 2015-2016 budget modification to appropriate $95,000 from the Serious Crime Reduction Fund and to appropriate $58,000 from the Vehicle Replacement Fund for purchases related to a dual-function patrol-explosive-detecting canine, a vapor-wake-detection canine, and active-shooter ballistic-resistant vests. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion for 10-minute break?
So moved. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Back it. Yeah, 970. Let's get going. Okay, we are back from break, and have a roll call, please.
Yeah, Councilmember Ginsburg.
He's recused.
Right, that's right, recused. Councilmember Brand.
Here.
Councilmember Horvath.
Here.
Councilmember San Marco, absent. Councilmember MD.
Here.
Mayor Aspel.
Here. Steve's phone's here, so I'm sure he's still in the building, okay. So, next up is a discussion on financing options for the waterfront infrastructure improvements, about receiving file report and financing, financing options, so who's up?
I guess that would be me. For the record, Stephen Proud, Waterfront and Economic Development Director. As we've talked about previously, you know, the, the goal of the realizing a world-class waterfront relies on our ability to provide a series of infrastructure and amenities that, that really does represent a world-class waterfront. And we've looked at that in the past, we've looked at the condition of our waterfront infrastructure, and one of the tasks that we've been asked to address is to look at the city's ability to fund infrastructure within the waterfront using our own resources, our own capacity to do that. And so, to that end, in May of last year, the City Council authorized the issuance of an RFP for financial advisory services, and, and we went out, selected KNN. They, that selection was made in July, and they've completed their analysis, and, and we're going to present that to you this evening. Basically, what we're going to show you is four different scenarios on how we might be able to approach the financing of the waterfront infrastructure, and what you'll see as part of that presentation is that we believe the supportable debt, which is what we would use for those improvements, could range anywhere from $34 million to $60 million, and we'll walk you through each of those scenarios. So, I'm not the expert in this, I'm going to introduce Mark Young from KNN and ask him to take you through the analysis that he conducted, and then we're happy to tackle questions at the end. And then we have one additional subject matter that we want to just touch on lightly, which is related to infrastructure, enhanced infrastructure financing districts as a financing tool, and I'll take care of that with just a couple of comments at the end.
Financing, should we decide to do this ourselves and not have a public private party?
Correct, this is, this is an analysis that looked at the capacity of the Harbor Enterprise to, primarily the Harbor Enterprise, as a, as a funding mechanism for the improvements within the waterfront, but Mark will take you through those four scenarios.
Great, thank you, Steve. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Mark Young, the Managing Director with KNN Public Finance, based in Los Angeles, and I think, as some of you know, the evening that you went ahead and hired me, I did reference that I have history in Redondo Beach. I was your financial advisor in the early 90s through the mid to late 2000s. So, as Stephen said, we were tasked with taking a look at the infrastructure needs of the harbor, and there were bookend presentations in terms of the amount of the need, and we were asked to analyze the feasibility and the scenarios under which the Harbor Enterprise currently structured, with your current resources, the ability to finance all or a portion of those infrastructure needs. So, we've put together a presentation here, we're going to quickly go over the project overview, which is the bookends in terms of the infrastructure needs. We're going to give a quick summary of the four different financing options that were identified. We'll quickly walk through each of the scenarios to give you a sense as to the range of those scenarios, and then a summary. So, moving on to the project overview, I, I think you've all seen this presentation. We literally took the presentation Stephen did back in the, in the summer, identifying the low and high ranges of the estimated infrastructure improvements, including parking structures, seaside lagoon, piers, boat launch, slips, as well as bicycle pedestrian circulation. We took the bookends, so we attempted to see if we can get to a level of being able to finance all 108 million, as well as can we finance a minimum. And I should clarify that these are hard costs, they don't include any of the soft costs associated with design.